It is 6:30, so I am going to call the meeting to order. First order of business, can we give these incredible singers another round of applause, please? And also, if you are a parent of one of these singers, can you please stand so we can thank you for sharing them with us tonight? Thank you. So I would appreciate it if you would please rise and our glorious chorus will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence to honor the memories of Sweetwater Community School student Mason Kochic and Whispering Wind Academy first grader Isaiah Garcia. Thank you very much. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Pantera?
Here.
Mrs. Case?
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Baker is not able to attend this evening. And Mrs. Christensen?
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of agenda, Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, Cabinet, and guests. Items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting, but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the Governing Board received the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have had time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the Governing Board may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and be brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. Any member of the audience who submitted a blue public comment card prior to the start of the meeting will be recognized to speak on that agenda item under items for approval. And with that, I would like to offer the agenda as posted.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Prior to the meeting, we received no blue public comment cards, so we are not changing the agenda. In regard to blue cards, does any member of the Governing Board wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Case may have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and recommended consent agenda items.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Governing Board's statements. Mrs. Christensen, do you have anything?
Welcome, everybody, this evening, and welcome, any parents that -- I love hearing the choirs that come through here. They're just -- we have so many talented students here in PV schools. I would like to -- I have four points today. I visited Greyhawk Elementary School, I believe it was last week, and I was so impressed with this school. There were outdoor classrooms, the families that served there. I was told that they have -- the teachers have long tenure, and three of them have been there at that school since 1998. And although the principal is fairly new himself, Mr. Hubble, he's been there four years. We had some good conversations. He was my son's middle school favorite, middle school teacher for seventh and eighth grade at Pinnacle Prep, so it was a very good visit. They are a core knowledge school of distinction, and they are getting ready to have an audit, so I'm very proud of that school. It's one of our premier schools, and we're -- we just have so many unique schools here at PV schools, and we're so proud of all of them. But in particular, the Core Knowledge, I know Nancy and I really, really love the Core Knowledge schools, and so I just wanted to mention that. The second, today, I was able to attend a sneak peek of the Shadow Mountain Elementary. So the North Valley Arts Academy dance program is phenomenal, and I've been to some of their shows, but I've never seen any of their dance programs. And I got the privilege of seeing it with some of our elementary and middle school kids, and they were so well behaved. I actually sat behind a row of Hidden Hills first graders, and I was so impressed. They were just enthralled in the performances. They were very good. They were clapping at the appropriate times, and they actually were clapping along a couple of times, and it made the dancers smile, so it was just so wonderful. And I'm so grateful that we have so many phenomenal programs here at PV schools, and the fact that we invite the younger kids to come watch the high schoolers. It brings some excitement to what is to come, and so I really love that mentorship. And I just think they do a fabulous job there. LeAnn Slater was just so welcoming, and she gave me a little program of -- it was a shortened program, because obviously for the younger kids, but if you all -- I know you are here tonight, so you won't be able to see the performance tonight, which is at 7:00, but there is another performance tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, so if any of you can attend that, I would encourage you. And then, and I'm sorry, my comments are a little bit longer today. I want to congratulate our new Governing Board members-elect, and I'm looking forward to them, and I know a couple of them are here today, and so I just want to say congratulations, and they're going to be joining us in December as our guests. Finally, I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen. Mr. Pantera, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Glad you're all here. I too visited some schools the last couple of weeks. I made the long and arduous journey across the street, walked across the street to Boulder Creek. That was my first one. Again, maybe first in the state again. I mean, once is phenomenal, but twice in a row? Well, good job. And I live right across the street from it. It's wonderful. It's wonderful. That was during Kindness Week, and they had a theme for every day of the week that week. I think the first day, they had to write a card to a friend, a new friend, and then they had tie-dye day, where they wear a tie-dye shirt, and then the next day was draw a picture and give it to a new friend, and the last day was like their Boulder -- Boulder Creek Humaware, you know? Good spirit. I loved to see that kind of thing. I went to Cactus View as well, visited that campus. You know, they have PV Beat, that our podcast. Well, I participated in PV Beat because they let me work on some of the congas in the music room. That was really neat. That was my version of PV Beat. And then, where was my last school? Fireside. They had the Wax Museum thing. You ever been to one of those wax museums where the kids take on some character and they have to do research on it and then dress like the person? Raise your hand if you've been to one of those. You have -- you need to go if you haven't. I've seen -- been to many of them, and this one was really well done. I met Jackie Robinson, Michael Jackson, George Washington. I've been to many of these, and I'm still -- I'm still holding out hope that someday, some student's going to be Casimir Polaski, okay? Father of the U.S. Cavalry, hero of our independence. So students, you hear that out there? I'm looking for Casimir Polaski to make it happen. I'm looking forward to coming back, because I saw some other projects that were going on that are -- that weren't ready yet. I think one is some animal dioramas that are going to be happening. I'm going to try and go back and see that, which leads me to tell all your teachers and parents, it's got some small little program, just in the classroom. Doesn't have to be a big, big event like this Wax Museum. Just a lesson, just invite me over. I'd like to see all the cool things you're all doing, because I'm very proud of what you all are doing, and I just love to see it and love to share what I see. So again, have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and, you know, leftovers, I'm just saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pantera. Mrs. Case?
Thank you. This past week, I was visiting with Dr. Reynolds, and we were having a meeting, and afterward, he invited me to meet with the Student Advisory Committee, Superintendent's Committee. It's all the student body presidents of all six high schools, and their principal comes with them to the meeting. And because I'm on my way out the door, he just said, you know, he introduced Nancy Case, but I got there a little early, and I was able to talk with each student body president, and I was so impressed with these students, the caliber of -- I said, "What's your favorite thing?" And they just love giving back to the community and being a leader and taking this -- taking the school into areas they hadn't gone before. It was really fun to talk to these young people, 17, 18 years old, and their ideas and what they were doing, and I wish I could have had a longer conversation. It was just -- it was fabulous. And I just have to piggyback on, I don't have a lot more time to have this little bully pulpit up here, and I haven't spoken a lot through the years, only bare minimum, but Core Knowledge is my favorite. I'm sorry. I'm a history, American history person, and there is so much good that can come out of Core Knowledge. It shouldn't just be at the higher-income area schools. It should be all over the district. We should have social studies. That's Core Knowledge. I remember walking into at Greyhawk, and they were -- read a book about Paul Revere. These are first graders reading about Paul Revere, and then they wrote a report about him, and I thought, wow. I was so impressed with their knowledge and their understanding. I've been at other Core Knowledge schools, and one of my favorite books on Dr. Seuss, I know you're supposed to read Dr. Seuss' book, but I read an American history book, and I could have a discussion with these kids about the founders in third grade. I was so impressed, and it just helps them later in life. It makes them love America. It helps them appreciate the country they're growing up in. We just need to have more Core Knowledge. That can only happen if the general public steps up and wants it. I'm just saying, you're the key to all of that. I've tried up here. It doesn't work. It has to be you. So also, I want to welcome two new school board members. Congratulations. It is very difficult to be elected to the board. It's a lot, a lot of work. It's a lot, a lot of time, and I just congratulate Jessica Wani and Amanda Lim for that, and I congratulate Ann Greenberg for being reelected. She's kind of crazy. She'll go into 24 years. I'm finishing at 20 years, but it's, I know, explaining to these young people a little bit, it's a volunteer job, and you have to be committed to your community and committed to public education to do it, which I'm committed to the community and I'm committed to public education. And I think the founders wanted us to give back, and I love American history, and that's one of the reasons I ran for the board, is because I think we need to do what we can to make our communities better places, and what better place than an education? And with all of that rambling, I'm going to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you. I hope you count your many blessings and that you have a wonderful time with family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Case. I'm just going to limit my comments to say thank you all for being here. I think we are all very grateful to our community and the support you give us, and I hope that everybody enjoys an extraordinary Thanksgiving with family and friends, and spends your time off relaxing or doing whatever you enjoy. And with that, next on our agenda is awards and recognitions. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, President Greenberg. At this time, I'd like to invite the Governing Board to join me in front of the dais.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, members of Cabinet, and attendees both in-person and virtual. Tonight, we have two -- or tonight, we have several recognitions to share with you. This evening, we'll be inviting our honorees to the front of the room for the recognition and photo. When I call your name, please come to the front of the room, and we will be taking some group photos this evening. For our first recognition tonight, we want to congratulate the 2024 AIA Division One Badminton Doubles Champions of the State. This short -- or rather, this sport requires speed, agility, and endurance, and a strong team partnership. Please help me welcome from Pinnacle High School Peyton Crank and Paige Croning. Up next, these teams worked hard all season and faced tough opponents, but never lost sight of the goal of winning state, demonstrating perseverance, teamwork, and sportsmanship. Please help me welcome the 2024 AIA Boys and Girls State Swim Champions from Horizon High School. In the 200-yard medley, Eleanor Kaufman, Alexis Olson, Lilly Cheney, Ireland Gillian. And in the boys' 100-yard butterfly and 100-yard backstroke, Michael Fox. The next 14 honorees tonight qualified for the 2025 National Merit semifinalists. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT during their junior year, and semifinalists are the highest-scoring entrants in each state. Students who qualify as finalists will be notified in February of their scholarship acceptance. We couldn't be more proud of our semifinalists, so please help me welcome to the front of the room from Paradise Valley High School Liam Albert, Kai Angelcheck, Serbie Chandak, Krish Desai, Kishav Mupadi, Mia Vargas, Sajani Patel, Shavin Omech, and Carissa Williams. From Pinnacle High School, Isabella Molina, Lauren Munsinger, Chase Sperry, and Emily Tran. And from Shadow Mountain High School, Ava Morales. Our final recognition tonight is 12 honorees who earned academic honors from the College Board National Recognition Programs. The College Board Recognition Programs honors students in five categories: National African-American Recognition Award, National Indigenous Recognition Award, National Hispanic Recognition Award, National First Generation Recognition Award, and National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. When I call your name, please come to the front of the room. For the National Hispanic Recognition Award from Horizon High School, Abigail Polk and Victoria Stewart. From Horizon High -- or, excuse me, from North Canyon High School, Sarah Lopez. Sarah is also the winner of the National First Generation Recognition Award. From Pinnacle High School, Thane Hildebrand. And Thomas Stetcher. Thomas also won the first -- or the National First Generation Recognition Award. From Shadow Mountain High School, Benjamin Trujillo. For the National African-American Recognition Award from Horizon High School, Amara Alisort. From Paradise Valley High School, Niall Solomon. And additionally, in the National First Generation Recognition Award from Paradise Valley High School, Piota Jandura. And from Pinnacle High School, Eva Nikolov. And that President Greenberg concludes this evening's awards and recognitions.
Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is Superintendent's comments. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, President Greenberg. Governing Board, Cabinet, and guests, in PV schools, we engage, inspire, and nurture students through high-quality instruction, meaningful educational opportunities, and dynamic learning experiences. These opportunities are made evident in our A- and B-rated schools and our schools who strive each year for continuous improvement. School letter grades were recently released, and I am happy to announce that 23 of our schools earned an A rating and 14 of our schools earned a B rating, so we congratulate all of those schools. Furthermore, Boulder Creek Elementary not only maintained their A rating, but also scored the highest overall percentage in the K8 schools category for the state of Arizona, with an impressive score of 104.5%. I didn't know that was possible, but apparently Boulder Creek, it is, topping last year's score of 103.82%. The Bobcats have outdone themselves again. This is the second consecutive year where Boulder Creek has earned top scores in the state. I would also like to recognize Desert Trails Elementary and Pinnacle High School, who maintain their A rating while outscoring most schools throughout the state. Both schools are ranked in the top 10 of their respective categories. And lastly, I want to take time to recognize our namesake high school, Paradise Valley High School, and our -- and Sweetwater Community School, who earned an A rating for the first time in both schools' history. I am proud of the hard work. I am proud of the hard work, dedication to excellence of all of our schools, and the commitment of each staff member that -- who demonstrates each and every day, and their commitment to excellence and ensure our students receive the absolute best education. If there are any employees, teachers, staff members, administrators from any of those schools, would you please stand so we can give you a round of applause? Congratulations. Awesome. As a reminder, the PV Community Food Bank is still looking for donations for its holiday -- annual holiday turkey drive. The food bank is looking for 10 to 12-pound frozen turkeys and non-perishable food donations that will be provided to families in need who live within the PV school's boundaries. The drive is happening now through November 27th. For more information, please visit pvcommunityfoodbank.org. On Monday, December 9th, the College and Career Department is offering an in-person district-wide senior FAFSA night to support senior students and families seeking guidance on completing their 2025 FAFSA forms. The event will occur at Shadow Mountain High School from 5:30 to 7:30, and registration is required. As a reminder, all participants must create their FSA IDs prior to the event, and parents will need to bring their 2023 tax documents and a laptop. For more information, please call -- please contact the College and Career Department. Congratulations this evening to Governing Board-elect members, President Ann Greenberg, Dr. Amanda Lim, Ms. Jessica Wani, on being elected to the Governing Board position starting in January. I am looking forward to continuing our journey of excellence with you and our entire community, so congratulations. I'd like to thank all the candidates and our entire community for turning out to participate in the election process. We are fortunate to be in a community that cares deeply about the success of our schools and the education of our students, because they are our future leaders in our community. And finally, tonight, I would also like to wish our entire district, our whole community, a happy and healthy Thanksgiving break. I am so thankful to have been afforded the opportunity to work with an incredible team of teachers, support staff, administrators, parents, this board, and our amazing students, and I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Next on the agenda are items for approval, and first up is consideration approval of new courses and revisions for the 2025-2026 high school catalog. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board. At our last meeting, we gave a presentation to the board, and with no other questions, we recommend approval.
Mrs. Case, may I have a motion to approve the new courses and revisions for the 2025-2026 high school catalog as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda-- Next on the agenda is consideration, and if deemed advisable to adopt Resolution Number 569 authoring, authorizing the issuance and sale of school improvement bonds of the district. Uh, for more information, we will turn to Mrs. Barrigan.
Thank you, President Greenberg and Governing Board. Uh, we have a presentation I need up. While we wait for that to come up, I will just introduce some folks that we have here with us tonight. Um, if I can't answer your questions, they certainly can. Uh, we have Mr. Jim Giel with Gus Rosenfeld, our attorneys for us on behalf of our bond sale, and then Megan Burke with Stiefel, acting as our financial advisor, and Bill Davis with Piper Sandler, acting as underwriter. Oh, I got those confused. I flipped them around. Okay. I need the presentation large on my screen. My eyes are not that good. Thank you. Okay, so quickly, this is our first sale of our bond that was approved in 2023, and we are starting with a $75 million sale, but just to reiterate that our credit ratings are, uh, very, uh, good and continue to be good, although we will have rating calls in the next couple of weeks. We don't expect any changes to, uh, our ratings with the credit agencies. We have an AA1 from Moody's and a AAA from Fitch. Uh, the authorization to be used, as mentioned, is $75 million. That will leave 265 million remaining of the 2023 bond authorization. The proceeds for the project are just under 74.7 million. The remainder goes to expenses for the bond sales, uh, rating agencies, the attorney fees, financial advisor, underwriter, all of those pieces. The principal is due on July 1st of each year for 2025 through 2043, and that is spread out over that period of time in order to help maintain a stable tax rate to the taxpayers and not to spike a tax rate at any point in time. We talked about that, um, sometime when we were doing the actual authorization for the bond. And then the expected all-in true interest costs are at one, oh, excuse me, 4.17, and, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about the bond. Again, if we have any detailed questions for the attorney, financial advisor, or underwriter, they're here to answer those questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrigan. We have, actually, we have no public comment cards. Um, so, may I please have a motion to adopt and approve Resolution Number 569, authorizing the issuance and sale of PVUSD School Improvement Bonds Project of 2023 Series A, 2025, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $75 million, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, authorizing the appointment of a financial advisor, bond registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent, approving the form of certain documents, and authorizing completion, execution, and delivery thereof, delegating the authority to approve and deem final a form of preliminary official statement, and ratifying all actions taken or to be taken to further this resolution as presented. Mrs. Case?
So moved.
Uh, does any board member have any comments or questions for Ms. Barrigan? Mrs. Case?
So, Ms. Barrigan, Mrs., um, they, this is to authorize the bond use, 75 million?
Sale.
Sale, the sale of the bond, so then we can then use.
Correct.
So, just to remind everyone, then, it doesn't say anything of its distribution, what it'll be used for. Could you kind of remind everyone of that process?
Yep, so we have a procurement process that we follow. It varies depending on the type of project or the dollar amount we believe that project will go through. A lot of that is done through the JOC process for renovations that are done to existing school sites or a bid process if we're doing a larger project over $3 million. Some, some of the projects may even fall under the $100,000 threshold for bringing them to the board, but very few would. Um, we'll have some furniture that is being purchased. Um, we will have some technology projects that are being done, and then the bulk of it will be used for renovations to school sites, and so much of that comes to the board for approval.
But my question is, who decides what's going to be done?
So, we have a team in our facilities department that works to determine what are our highest needs, our biggest issues, what has the most tickets that we're seeing, what are we spending a lot of time on, what are we doing too many repairs for and it's time to replace? Um, and we, we have experts in that field who do that, led by Dr. Drew Davis. Uh, for technology, Jeff Billings and his team work much the same way in order to determine what our next technology needs might be. Uh, we have a cycle of certain things in both areas. Um, and then with furniture, we, uh, there are a few folks who go out and evaluate each of the school sites and determine which ones are, um, needing the new furniture. We started with all of our high schools in the 2019 bond, and so 2023 bond will focus on our middle schools and elementary schools.
So, on this agenda that we voted on tonight, there was a, um, on the consent agenda, repairing air conditioning at Desert Shadows. Was that from the previous bond that's paying for that?
That'll be 2019 bond, correct.
2019 bond, but that's an example of what this would do, because the units are, you can't get parts for them anymore, and so it's that kind of thing that we use the bond money for.
Yep, or they're beyond repair. Um, it will cost too much to repair them, it's time to replace them, they're out of their useful life, things of that nature.
Okay, so that's, that's just some examples. Like, we just redid the kitchen at Paradise Valley High School and the eating area, which desperately needed it.
Wonderful.
Those are the kind of things that we'll look forward to in the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does any other board member have any other questions?
Piggy, piggybacking on what you said, uh, my visits to the schools, principals were also sharing with me some of the, their visions, how for, how some of these monies could go to improve their campuses. A lot of safety issues, I know Boulder Creek wants to do something with the bus lane to make it safer, and all these kinds of things. Principals and staff are looking, how can we improve? How can we make our schools better all the time? That's, that's what these funds are for.
Yes, and if I could just add on to that, that's an important point. Dr. Davis speaks with every principal, uh, at least once, if not multiple times throughout the year, to determine what they feel like their, their needs are at the moment as well.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, so, I appreciate the voters approving this money, but I will, I do want to say that I, I'm hoping that this, the newborn next year will continue to look at things that are fiscally responsible when we're approving these items, just because these are approved. We, but part of my frustration, I think, is that we still have those, um, JOCs, which are job order contracts, and to me, it's kind of a no-bid contract, and I would like to see us, perhaps the next board in the future, to get some competitive bids, and, um, I'm used to being in business, not in education, where you get requests for proposals. We don't do that. Um, but I, I do appreciate all the, all the money that's coming from the voters that, that has been approved. Um, the, the school that I toured this past week, they had some phenomenal, they had an outdoor, um, they had an outdoor science area, and part of it was approved by, um, part of it was used with that type of money, the other part was used by their community members, but, um, so I just want to thank the community for approving these things, but I still would want us to be, um, fiscally responsible, even though these monies are already approved.
And if, President Greenberg, can I just add something?
Yes.
Fiscally responsible, yes, always. I like those words, too, um, and I like those actions better. Uh, I just want to reiterate that JOC is a competitive process. Uh, it's just done competitively on the front end. Mrs. Christiansen?
Yeah, I would just like it to be competitive on the back end, because it, it's wonderful that we, and I know that we really vet these contractors, but, um, it would be nice to have it be competitively done on the back end.
Thank you. And Ms. Barrigan, one thing I want to talk, um, mention, and you can remind me, um, before we go out for, by, to, before we are even asked to, um, put a bond measure on the ballot, we ha- we usually convene a committee that then is always getting this information, for example, from our principals, from our, uh, you know, from our sites to, to, uh, determine areas that we would use the bond money for, which is how, in the end, um, you all present a final amount that you would like us to go out for. So this is a continual process that gets honed, um, when we go out for the bond, correct? So it, obviously, there's money in there for emergency repairs, et cetera, et cetera, but this, this is a long-term process that is constantly.
Correct.
Uh, reviewed. Okay. Thank you. Uh, does anybody else have any other comments or questions? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to discuss, consider, and give direction on voting on one bylaw change, change proposal from the Arizona School Boards Association. This bylaw proposal by the ASBA Board of Directors must be approved by two-thirds of the ASBA member boards to be effective. After discussion, the board will vote to give direction to the board secretary to vote in the manner the board has approved. So this is, if you all recall, we had this on the agenda, uh, at a previous meeting as a discussion item, um, and we did, uh, discuss pieces that were in here. Uh, I know ASBA had a webinar that it was going to present. Mr. Panter, were you able to attend?
Yes, I was able to attend that one there. I specifically asked the questions that you all had brought up about, uh, um, when they talk about, uh, process, what is that process? And, um, there was two different issues. One was, um, they said about the, um, vetting of the, the person that they're, they would hire. They actually get an outside contractor to do that, another company to, to vet the people that they're looking for, and when it comes to some of the other policies, that's, as you'd mentioned, I think, is part of their regular, um, procedures, is deeper, deeper in the procedures where that, those comes up, but it wouldn't be actually in this part here. Um, I'll try, I'll look it up here. You know what I'm talking about, about the, um, things you forgot to? I forgot the exact name of it. I didn't, and I left my notes at home. I did ask the question, and I was, uh, I was impressed with their answers, that, that we predicted they would say, that one part is something that's already in the procedures deeper in, where it's more spelled out, the procedures of how to take care of this disciplinary kind of things. And then the vetting of, we asked about the vetting, what is the vetting process? Well, they use a company to do that, and that company, you have to look at how they, uh, independent company does their, 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 their process. They couldn't answer specifically how the company did it, but they said it's a different, uh, person.
If you can remind me, when we talk about vetting, which part are we talking about?
Oh, like, uh, looking for new directors or things like that.
So, their director search, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, well, yeah, no, they were very transparent that, that they hired a firm to do that.
Well, the, I, I know someone had asked it during that, that last meeting. I asked those questions about it, and they reiterated that. Um, I, I, I saw no difference in, in how I felt before about approving what they, what they want to do with these.
Does anybody else have any other comments, thoughts? Ms. Case, are you heading towards the moment?
Yeah, I want to, I, can I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Um, or may I make a comment? Um, so, did they say if they were going to have a new company to vet the director?
Yes, that's what they're talking about, when they do, when they do it in the future.
When they do it in the future, and are they going to have a list of requirements that they want in vetting them? Did they have anything of that nature?
I didn't ask about listed their requirements, except what's posted in these, these bylaws.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Christiansen, do you have any comments, questions?
I was hoping to attend that webinar, but did not, but I did have the opportunity to chat with, uh, Mitra Kazie, who's the current ASBA secretary, and I know attended most, but unfortunately not the final meeting of the committee, and, you know, we talked a little bit more about, um, the direction some of this took. Um, I, she, some of the questions she could not answer, because she didn't, uh, she was unable to attend the last meeting where the committee itself voted on, on what they were putting in here. Um, I reiterated some of the concerns I had, for example, um, my biggest one is, um, changes to some of the duties, and particularly what, uh, the language is in regard to, um, their budget and financial oversight committee, which is towards the end. Uh, it's Article VII in their standing committees. Um, and personally, I, as much as I, I understand where they're going with this, I wish they had not done this as a single up or down, because I think, for me, there's still things in here I'm not, um, I don't feel that I can support, because I just don't think they worded it as well as they could have. So I'd rather not put it in and then have to revise it. I think I would have appreciated had they given us maybe article by article or something like that, and they did not, so.
Rather than one bundle, you say?
Yes.
Hmm, I get that.
So, you still have concerns, then?
Yeah.
Would you share any of your concerns?
Well, first of all, I, you know, the editor in me is, is having a problem with some of the wording they used, because, you know, when you use, there, there is a difference between putting may and shall, and I don't think they, I, I think they were pretty good about, um, if their intent was, it must happen, they used a shall, but there are times where they've used a may, or times they've used a shall, that I, I'm not sure they meant it the way they wanted to. Um, I think, um, just having looked at it, and I, uh, you know, when we first talked about it, uh, I think there are things in here I'm not totally sure, I think should go to the board, uh, in the way they, you know, the board makes final decisions on certain things, and I think some of these should be maybe larger than the board. Um, I will reiterate, I don't, and again, maybe they have policies and procedures, but I think the way they discuss the budget and financial oversight committee and shall having powers is deemed necessary to ensure the financial health of the association is giving a little bit too much power to a volunteer committee that may not have the full picture needed to, um, take actions that might be necessary to ensure the financial health of the association. And I, I think there's, there's a way they can use this committee more appropriately, because this is a committee that is not elected by the membership as the executive committee is. Um, this is not a committee of staff members that would have, that, you know, are going to carry out, um, whatever actions are needed. If they had created it as more of an advisory committee, I, I think would make sense, but the way they've worded it, uh, I think they're giving it a little bit too much. And, um, I, maybe that is their intent, but I'm not sure. So, those are some of the, and again, I still don't understand why they did not change Article VIII, Section 1, from a vote of two-thirds of the member boards to a vote of two-thirds of the member boards voting, um, because trying to get two-thirds, they've ne- once they put that in, they've never managed to change it, and I don't know how many bylaw amendments they've actually gotten passed since they put that language in. So if they were going to do an up or down vote, they should have put that in, did not. Mrs. Christiansen?
Yeah, so, um, the, when we discussed this last time, we, we did say that we were having some difficulty with the way the language was worded, and a lot of us defer to, to your expertise, because this is the first time we're going through a process like this. So I, I don't know if you know the answer to this, President Greenberg, but after this is approved by the different governing boards, will they go with a fine-tooth comb with legal counsel to ensure that the language is accurate and concise, or is this the final version with the crossouts?
Um, I don't know the specific answer, but if this is approved, this is the language. Now, it, we could then get something next year, cleaning it up, but this would be the language that's approved, if two-thirds of member boards vote yes.
So are you saying the chances of, of having two-thirds of the member boards is slim, because that's hard to get to it, even to pass this?
Yes. I mean, it's hard, it's, I don't know, there's a lot here, so boards may be talking about it, but, um, not all boards vote, so just getting.
Numbers.
Getting two-thirds voting. Getting two-thirds voting, let alone all voting yes, is difficult. Yeah.
You were talking about the, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee, about where it says shall there, the 1.3?
Yes.
Because then it says, well, as deemed as necessary. It says shall be established, so you're saying it's being established without them vote, anyone voting on it? Who is establishing it then? Says shall be established. That could be by a vote, right?
Say that again?
The Budget and Finance Oversight Committee shall be established as a standing committee. Well, if it's being established, who's just doing the establishment if it's not being voted for?
This, this vote would establish it.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Again, that's, um,
Because you mentioned it's not voted on, I thought that, to me, I assumed it was voted, so I'm, thank you for clarifying that, too.
No, anything in blue is new.
Pardon me?
If it's in blue in here, it's new. So right now, that's not a committee, that's...
No, but I'm saying the, the establishment, when that committee is established, people will vote on that, but you're saying, no, they won't.
No, if this is approved, it establishes this committee.
Oh, okay, see, I misread that.
And then it says the treasurer shall serve as a chair, or it said, or designate. So the treasurer that is elected will serve as the chair.
Right.
And that person's elected.
That person is elected.
Okay.
But that's, you know, this doesn't say how many people, you know, the, what the committee, how the committee is established, the treasurer is the chair, but, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that, that they're gonna follow everything the treasurer might recommend.
So you don't feel comfortable with this yet?
Personally, no.
So you think they need to go back and work on it further? And the chances of them getting a vote on this are not very good anyway?
Either way, it wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, quite honestly, I think the chances of them getting anything approved with that two-thirds in there is tough, even, and this is so extensive, I think the chances are even more reduced, unfortunately. That's, that's why I wish they had done maybe article by article, because I think there's things in here that are great and necessary and would be easily passed, but I think if boards are having the discussion we're having, where it's like, you know, I like this piece, but I don't like this piece.
Mm-hmm.
It gets more difficult. So, any other comments or questions, Mrs. Christensen?
Yes, a clarifying question. So if we choose not to, to approve as is, are they looking to board members, to, to governing boards, individual governing boards, to provide feedback as to why? Or is it, is this, in the past, has it just been an all or nothing? Because as you mentioned, some of it is very straightforward, but I find it poorly written in, in places and a little bit vague in others. So as written, I would hesitate to approve.
Um, I have not served on their governance committee, so I don't know, um, if they have an established process. I will say I was asked to possibly serve on the next one. But, you know, again, even looking here, they are establishing the governance committee as a standing committee. It's actually, I don't know, I thought it was a standing committee, um, and have responsible responsibilities commensurate with the purpose of the committee, which is not language I would have put in bylaws without saying what the purpose of the committee is. Um, so I think that's a process question, and I really can't answer it. I don't know. Anybody else have any other comments or thoughts?
I have a question. How do we vote on this? Do we, does she, is it one vote for the, the whole board, up or down? Or is it individual? I don't know.
Um, well, I will be asking fairly soon for a motion to approve, and then we will either, you know, you either say, yea, you approve, or no.
Then, then our governing board gets one vote?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And the secretary will be the one that casts the vote.
Yes. That, our vote will provide direction to Mrs.
Yeah, to our secretary to, to vote her name.
Yeah. So, so the motion will be to approve, and if you don't approve, you vote no. Anything else in terms of the discussion?
Seeing none, Mrs. Case, may I please have, please have a motion to approve one bylaw change proposal from the Arizona School Boards Association, as discussed, and provide direction to the board secretary to vote in the manner the board has approved.
Some of...
Any last comments or questions?
Again, I think some of the procedural things that you brought up about this is in the procedures, that we just don't have them in front of us. But that's the last thing I'll say about it.
Okay, which is unfortunate.
It is unfortunate, yes.
All I can say. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Any abstentions? The motion, um, does not pass. Three nays to one aye. So Ms. Chisman, you will be directed to vote no on behalf of the board.
We'll turn the voting.
Thank you. And I'm guessing we're gonna see this next year in a different form. Um, next on the agenda is acceptance of gifts and donations. I'd like to review a few that were, were received since our last meeting. Uh, World Strides provided Desert Shadows Middle School with $3,360 for substitute teacher pay while teachers were chaperoning the DC trip. At Greenway Middle School, Arizona Community Foundation provided the PE department with $3,000. At Horizon High School, the Husky Baseball Club, um, gave the school $6,607 to purchase a lawnmower. Uh, at Paradise Valley High School, the Thunderbirds Foundation gave $1,000 for girls golf and another $1,000 for boys golf, and did the same at Shadow Mountain High School for boys golf. Sonoran Sky Elementary, um, Adam Thaler and Emily, Emily Rosenthaler provided $1,000 for the site discretionary fund, and Brett Myers and Elizabeth Myers provided $2,655 to pay off lunch debt. And at Sunrise Middle School, Active Stars Outreach gave the athletic department $5,000. So thank you to all of these donors, if any of you are here. We thank you in person. There were many, many other donors, and we appreciate the generosity of our community. Mrs. Case may have a motion to accept gifts and donations, please.
So moved.
Any comments? Mrs. Christensen?
Yes. I hope that lawnmower is either a riding mower or a robo-mower, because $6,000 is, I mean, it's, it was a nice donation, but it just seems kind of pricey. Hopefully, it's not a push mower.
I'm guessing it's not a push mower. Anybody else have any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Call to the Public. Please turn your attention to the video monitors.
Call to the Public is about to convene. This portion of today's meeting allows the public the opportunity to address the governing board. Although state law does not require that the governing board hold a call to the public, the Paradise Valley Unified School District and its board have chosen to do so because we believe it's important to hear about concerns and issues from our community. While Call to the Public is not designed to be a discussion, the board is here to listen. Due to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the governing board cannot respond to, discuss, or take any action on items brought up during this time. However, staff members may be directed to get back to you and address individual concerns. As a reminder, the point of this and every board meeting is to accomplish the business at hand, and to be able to do so in an open and collaborative way. All in attendance are expected to observe meeting rules as well as rules of politeness and decorum, so that we may serve as an example to our students that issues can be discussed in a respectful and civil manner.
Thank you. Tonight, we have six people who have submitted comment cards prior to the start of the meeting, so each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. As a reminder, we ask that you please direct your comments to the board. Please state your first and last name when you come to the podium. Our first speaker is Sarah Robinson, and, uh, she will be followed by J. E. Ruiz.
Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds, thank you for the time to speak tonight. My name is Sarah Robinson. I'm the IDL of Counseling at North Canyon High School and a PVA Executive Board Member at Large. I'm speaking on my own, on my own behalf tonight. October 1st, I was told that I most likely have cancer. On October 24th, I was starting chemotherapy. I will have to go through various treatments over the next year, but I'm a fighter and I'm a planner, so I'm already saying that I'm a survivor. Also, lucky for me, my oncologist told me she wants me to work through this. So I love my job, I love my school, I love my team, my students, they give me hope, they make me laugh. Um, I get to help them plan their futures, teach them how to plan and advocate for themselves, but the secret is, I might need them more than they need me because they're good for my mental health. When I started planning for myself what it looked like to miss as little time as possible, I realized the problem. I'm going to run out of sick days I've saved since I started here in 2020 at the end of my mastectomy leave. I'll then go back to work, hopefully missing minimal time, but that time missed is going to be unpaid. No problem, I thought, there's a sick bank leave policy. The policy, though, is 10 consecutive days unpaid, followed by consecutive unpaid time to access it. I have cancer, I'm going to have unpaid time off, but I can't access the tools set up to help staff like me, because my unpaid time is not going to be consecutive, because I'm choosing to do what is best for my mental health and for our students by continuing to work. I can't access a benefit that is available to others who don't have the ability to make that choice, or for their own very valid reasons, choose not to. I've emailed the board neighboring district policies, all of them are much more inclusive. At the very least, sick bank should be accept, accessible without the consecutive qualifier. By requiring these consecutive days, the policy is discriminating against chronically ill and those going through treatments but, who are trying to work. I want this policy changed so the next person navigating a cancer diagnosis, worrying about their life or chronic illness, doesn't have to navigate this decision of taking unnecessary weeks off during pay, during treatment, and using the sick bank, or working through days unpaid, as I've had to do while literally trying to figure out how to fight for my own life.
Next is J. Ruiz, followed by Krista Hall.
Good evening, President, and members of the board and superintendent. Today, I am here to speak to you as a resident, a parent, and, um, an employee of actually the district. Um, I want to, I'm basically here to advocate for those who, they can't speak for themselves, the students of our schools. Um, I've been working at Indian Bend for the past 30 days. In that time, I have encountered persistent foul odors resembling sewer gas in our kitchen that's attached to the multipurpose room. Many of the times, the students complain of this foul odor. Despite notifying direct supervisors, the school principal, the issue has persisted. While talking with other staff members, I have learned that this issue has been there for at least 10 years. When other staff members have brought it up, it's been just swept under the rug. I have been given temporary solutions, like dumping water down the floor drains to prevent the foul odor from coming up the drain. This smell has made me, my workers, all dizzy, nauseous. Um, at times, we, we, we have headaches. My nose is consistently running when I'm in this area. I know that we've just passed this large amount of money, um, for our district to put money into our schools, and I hope that Indian Bend is one of the schools that we are investing in, because this school has not seen any improvements, I don't know in how long. We have a fresh coat of paint on the outside of the building, but that's not taking care of the cleanliness in our school. Um, I've witnessed students have smeared feces on the walls in the school. The superintendent, or not the superintendent, the, 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 the cleaning staff doesn't know whose job is who. So this feces has been there now, it's still there. You'll see, if you go there tomorrow, there's still feces there, it's been there for over a month. We have, we're paying our, with our tax dollars, for someone to clean this school, and it's not being done. Our children are, are, are future, and they're, they're in a health hazard. Feces can spread a numerous, um, bacteria, disease, and we need, we need answers. We need some kind of review of our maintenance policy. Um, we need to review the contract, because these people are being paid to do something that's not being done. Um, I can send you the pictures if you want of this, I'm not sure that you want them, but it's still there. It's in the handicap stall, so if someone uses the handicap stall, it's smeared all over the ledge. So if you have to use it to get up and down off the toilet, you're getting feces all over your hands. And as we know, most children aren't keen on washing their hands, so we don't know where all of that bacteria is being spread. I also want to bring to your attention that when I brought this to the school's principal, the school's principal, or not this principal, the administrator assistant and the front office staff, I was told that some of our students are from Peru and even Mexico and have never, and are not...
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Uh, next is Krista Hall, followed by Julia, Julie Garcia.
I have three kids in the Paradise Valley Unified School District, all at Sandpiper Elementary. My home district is Scottsdale Unified School District. We chose Paradise Valley, specifically Sandpiper, for the Spanish immersion program. And as you may know, we are having some issues with hiring for appropriate teachers to help facilitate this program. So I'm here to bring this to your attention tonight, which I'm sure you guys have already been brought to, but this is a big concern for me and my family, and for many families, and we have lost many families at our school, dear, dear friends of ours, and we would like to know what's being done to help recruit, um, appropriate teachers? How we are retaining the teachers that we have? Is there a visa program out there? Is there something that we can be doing as a community? Where are we marketing? Where are we advertising these jobs? We just need more assistance and more help in getting good, qualified, uh, teachers to help support our dual-language school.
Thank you. Next is Julie Garcia, and followed by, I'm, sorry, who gave us a card? Okay, sorry, you'll be next.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Julie Garcia. Um, I am a parent at Sandpiper. I have two little kids, um, that are in the program. We've been part of the district for seven years. We live in the district, volunteer, um, PTO, volunteer on, uh, district committees as well. So, um, really involved, really passionate, and really committed. Um, I'm here to speak before you and our community on a topic that is critical not only to the future of our students, but the continued growth of this district, um, the recruitment of language immersion teachers, right? We know this extends beyond just sandpaper, um, but it's something that we need to address as a whole, um, and we need to do a better job about thinking about it differently. I am pretty hopeful and certain that actions are being taken, um, but as a PTO member, as a parent, I'm not well-versed in what those actions are. So I think that we can really do a better job of communicating to the community, because I do think your, uh, language immersion parents are some of the most loyal, right? We have chosen this path for our children, we are committed to the hard days, um, and we celebrate the good days. We are committed to supporting our teachers, um, and our, and our staff, right, and administration, giving back to the district, but we really need help. We need help in being flexible in the approach, how we're thinking. I hope that everybody in this room agrees that teachers are underpaid. We've got to work on fixing that, but we also need to look at our Spanish immersion teachers and Mandarin immersion teachers and their skills differently. We promise our kids a very bright future with great-paying jobs and those skills that they're coming out with bilingual skills, right? We're, we're telling them, we highlight the opportunity that exists, yet I think we're not really doing the same when we look at these teachers and the skills that they bring. So it's great... So it's great that we have curriculum in Spanish, but they spend so much time, their days look very different than our English teachers, right, that aren't at an immersion program. They have double the parents alone to deal with, right? We can all kind of relate with what that might look like on those hard days. So I'm just here to ask that the district looks at expanding recruitment networks, right? I know that job postings are great, community outreach is great, but we need to do that on steroids, we need to do more. We need to look at where these people are, we need to communicate and promote our programs so that we can build that pipeline and funnel so that when we have a shortage, it doesn't take four, six, nine, 12 months. We still don't have a fourth-grade teacher, okay? This week, we were, as parents, concerned we were losing a sixth-grade teacher, right? So we know that there's going to be retirement and people are going to leave, but we need to make sure that we're doing the best we can so we don't have these gaps in the education. As committed as I am, I'm scared. I'm scared. I have to protect my kids, right? We, Sandpiper, has lost more than 10 students this year alone, and you can tie a lot of that back to this gap that we have. They're going to Scottsdale? Is that my timer?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So next is Divya, and if you could give us your full name when you get to the podium. And finally, will be Leah Canably.
Okay. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Divya Yoder, and I'm a parent with children at Sandpiper Elementary. Desert Trails is our homeschool, but we make an effort to drive to Sandpiper because we believe strongly in the value of Spanish immersion program. Recently, as other parents have shared, we've noticed troubling trend of Spanish teachers leaving their positions at Sandpiper. A Spanish immersion is such an important part of this curriculum and a major reason families choose this school. This raises serious concerns about the long-term stability and success of the program. I believe it is crucial for the district to prioritize addressing these retention challenges and implement strategies to attract and retain qualified Spanish immersion educators. Families such as ours have made significant commitments to being a part of this program, and we want to see it thrive. Recently, I met a young lady who's on a visa program from the, she's part of the International School in Scottsdale. She is on a visa program, and she will be here during the rest of the term, and I believe for one additional year. I believe that's something we can all look into and utilize it to our advantage. I would like to hear how the district plans to support Sandpiper, and I'm happy to assist in any way I can to strengthen the program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Finally, Principal Canably.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds and Cabinet, as well as guests. My name is Leah Canably, and I'm the proud principal at Desert Shadows Middle School. I am here just to make sure that all of you have seen our posts on Facebook, heard the PV beat, and are aware that we are turning 50 this year, and we are having a great big party on Saturday, November 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 at our school. We invite all of our current, former, and future Sidewinders, their families and community members, to come out and roll through the decades with us. We have a memory wall. You will be able to have the opportunity to make your mark on our school in a permanent tile wall that we'll be attaching to our media center with the help of PB High School students, former Sidewinders, by the way, that created a cool tile that's going to be front and center. So come out for a rolling good time, come for an hour, stay for the whole day, but we hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes call to the public. So next on the agenda are items for discussion, and these are all first reads of recommended policy revisions. The first two will be, the first few revisions are actually from Dr. Holmes, and in his absence, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bergen.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, and Dr. Reynolds. The first policy is for GCFC, and that is professional staff, hold on. Sorry. I need these now. Okay. Professional Staff Certification and Credentialing Requirements. It lists 24 criminal offenses subject to mandatory pre-employment disclosure. We will recommend that the list be expanded to comply with the reporting requirements of recently enacted statute 15509. The additions are highlighted in yellow, and I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions you have.
Does any member of the Board have any comments or questions regarding this policy revision? Ms. Christensen?
Yes. Thank you for presenting this to us. In addition to fiscal responsibility, my two top things are academics and keeping all our children safe, so I'm glad to see a little bit stronger language and some of these updates that we're utilizing. I know we have so many amazing teachers, and we are all mandatory reporters, so I am happy that we are looking at language to strengthen this and to ensure that all our children remain safe while they're in our care at school.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Any other member of the Board have any questions or comments regarding revisions to GCFC? GCFC. Seeing none, Mrs. Bergen, how about GDFA?
Yes, thank you, President Greenberg, members of the Board, and Dr. Reynolds. GDFA is the corresponding policy for our support staff qualifications and requirements. It also lists the 24 criminal offenses subject to mandatory pre-employment disclosure. Again, we will recommend that list be expanded to comply with the reporting requirements with ARS 15509. Additions are highlighted in yellow and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does any member of the Board have any comments or questions? Ms. Christensen?
As a former parent in this district, again, I'm support of these language changes. I would just like to call on all of us to protect the children and not people that abuse children. I know this is a really difficult topic to discuss, so again, I'm glad we're, language, the previous administration had had a, in my opinion, were a little bit soft on moving people around when there would be accusations, so I'm hoping going forward, especially with this stronger language, that if anybody is harming a child in our district, that we would take steps to protect the victims.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Seeing none. Next is consideration of revisions to Governing Board Policy IMG, Animals in Schools. Dr. Lindsay.
Good evening, President Greenberg, members of the Board, and Dr. Reynolds. Policy IMG, Animals in Schools. So with this policy, language was updated and clarified based on the Americans with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA, ARS 11-1024, and Arizona Admin Code R13-13-104. So we recommend the ASBA revisions as presented, and the changes are highlighted in yellow. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about IMG? Mr. Pantera?
Yeah, I have a question. These therapy animals, right? There's a process to identify what these are. You just can't say, this is my therapy teacup kitty or something like that, right?
President Greenberg, Mr. Pantera, yes. We do have regulation that supports this policy that oversee both service animals and therapy animals.
And that's a state establishes what those qualifications are for a therapy animal?
The.
And we follow that with our policies?
Yes, Mr. Pantera. We follow the regulation presented by ASBA that we've updated, working with our Director of Student Services and our Risk Management with Valley Schools, so it's all been vetted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions regarding IMG? Seeing none, we will go to consideration of revisions to Governing Board Policy IGA, Curriculum Development. Ms. Copeland?
President Greenberg, Governing Board, and Dr. Reynolds. Policy IGA, Curriculum Development, is being revised to remove language requiring certified personnel to serve on curriculum committees. It was removed due to lack of statutory basis. The changes are noted in yellow. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mrs. Case?
Our practice has been to include teachers, parents, et cetera, on these committees. Will we continue to do that? It's the language that changes, but not the practice? Is that correct?
President Greenberg, Mrs. Case, absolutely. So we do a call to committee for every committee. We do that includes parents, administrators, teachers.
Community members.
And we will continue, and community members, yes, will continue that practice.
But the policy can't say it because of the statute of the state, is that correct?
Mrs. Case, yes, that's exactly right.
So the policy has to change that you don't have to, but our practice will be that we'll continue to do so?
Mrs. Case, exactly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding?
I thought, anything with curriculum, you had to establish committee, right? By statute, you have to have, if it's curriculum, you have to have a committee?
President Greenberg, Mr. Pantera, absolutely, yes, you have to have a committee.
Yeah, that is part of the statute to actually have a committee.
So we can't require our teachers to serve on the committee? That would.
Right, right.
Don't have any basis to do that.
Right, okay, okay, so I want to make sure.
Yeah. We typically have. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, we typically have no lack of participation. People are eager to be on our committees.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding IGA? Seeing none. Last, we will look at consideration of revision to Governing Board Policy DJE, excuse me, Bidding and Purchasing Procedures. Mrs. Bergen?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, and Dr. Reynolds. DJE has a simple addition of the portion highlighted in yellow to ensure that districts are purchasing in accordance with code of federal regulations. We do already do that, but they're just codifying that in the policy, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding DJE?
I do.
Mrs. Case?
This has been an area that I've been interested in for years and years, so I'm not picking on anyone. This has been, my husband owns a construction company, so having the lowest bid on something to me and being a fiscally responsible person is something I feel strongly about. So while we have this up, and I know we're just, what's in yellow is what's being changed, I was wondering if we could just kind of talk about how this all works? And so, right now, if it's under $150,000, we don't have to have a board vote on it, is that correct?
That's correct, Mrs. Case.
Okay, and so, we are often, I can't remember what it's called, our district often does the choosing and vetting the people who do various things. What is that called?
Cooperative contract, or specifically for construction projects, a JOC.
Yeah, but then even, we do it for other things, too, even for.
Cooperative contracts.
Cooperative contract, okay. So we'll often do that, and there must be some financial benefit to our district because we do it frequently.
Yeah, there are a few benefits. It's efficient, it's transparent, it allows us to do the procurement at the beginning of the process so that we're not stuck when we need all of whatever, the goods or the services to be performed, that we're not having to do the procurement and delaying any of those projects.
Okay, so let's say it's for a technology or whatever, but you'll end up with five different people who we have found, we vetted, we found them to be upstanding, good companies. After we do that, do we have them bid for the lowest price? Or do we just choose, or maybe there's such a variety, not everybody does, they might produce pencil A, but we want pencil B, and only this other company does pencil B? I'm making that up, but is that?
The pricing, when you do a cooperative contract, the pricing is provided ahead of time. So for example, with a cooperative contract, that's a JOC, they have all of their unit price, their open book pricing, their labor pricing, so that's the transparent part of the process. So we have a list of those who are qualified, and on our current One GPA contract, there are 15 general contractors on there, of which the district uses, I think around 10 to 12 of those. All of that process for the pricing is done at the beginning throughout that cooperative contract piece so that we know what the pricing is ahead of time.
Okay. I don't remember how many years, and I asked you about this, and you weren't here when it happened, so let's say eight, 10 years ago, I'm not sure, but a while back, we were asked as a board to increase, and I did research on it, and I unfortunately asked someone about it who was very pro on it, and afterward, I found some negative things on it. So, the construction procurement, I'll just read it. "A construction purchase will be affected in accordance with the procedures for construction procurement in the school district procedure code, including the alternative project delivery methods, ADM. The director of purchasing will determine whether the purchase is a construction procurement. The maximum dollar amount of an individual job for a job order contracting construction service shall be $3 million." So up till $3 million, we as a board don't vote on it. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. We bring other projects to the board that are below $3 million.
But if it's coming from this certain method, then we don't?
If it's coming from JOC, we don't have to bring it through to the board. The board has given the authority for the, as you mentioned in there, I think says Director of Purchasing, to have that authority.
Okay. I would bring this up to the board. This won't get done while I'm on the board, but I think that should be lowered back down because I think there needs to be more looking at it more carefully for jobs. And I understand why the process is there, because sometimes we needed to get something done quickly, and you don't have a board meeting in between. I understand emergency type of things, I get that. But $3 million is a lot of money, and I think in hindsight, I wish I had not voted for it and that we have a lower amount. I can't remember what the old amount was, it might have been 1.5 million, I can't remember.
It was, if I had to guess, it probably was 2 million, that's, at that time, that's what a lot of districts had, most of them have moved to 3 million.
So it might have been 2 million, okay, I can't remember. But I just, I mean, I have heard about construction in schools for so long, being married to an owner of a construction company, and I just know if you will vet the people who are going to bid on a job, and then you take it to the, and then you let the five people that you said, yes, you're qualified, qualified bid, is what I think it's called, and after all these years, I should know the terminology, but qualified bid. So you qualify the people who are bidding on it so you don't end up with some silliness that has happened in the past, and then you bid on it, and it's competitive, and I believe that helps bring it down. And I know that we use, oh, what is that called? JOC, and I forget all the ABCs, and the GP, yeah, all of those. We use a lot of different services, which we've done the homework on, I get that, and I know we're being very careful, but I believe so much in the free market system that I think we can do a better job. And I don't mean that in a negative way, I know the schools have gone this direction because we don't want to have, we used to have a larger, we had an assistant superintendent over construction, it's separate from financial, and it was Dr. Lee was over that, and he had a secretary, and there were things that was, I know it's different than it used to be, but I just think we need to think outside the box a little bit and see if we couldn't get community members involved a little bit with somehow, I don't know, I just think there should be some more thought put into this and not just do what all the other school districts are doing. And I know we're often the leader of all the other school districts, and that's not, I'm not saying this in a negative way, I just want to be as fiscally responsible to our voters as we possibly can be and still get the best product and not use the same people all the time. And I'm not picking on you, I've been raising this flag for years, you can ask former superintendents. I've been raising this flag for years, you can ask former superintendents, I brought this up a lot. So I just think that we need to be careful and, and figure out ways that we can do things a little differently, and that would take some policy changes and working with lawyers and all kinds of things. I just wanted to bring it up since we're talking about this bidding, purchasing, and procedures, is what it says at the top of this page. So I thought I could bring it up right now because we are talking about getting jobs done and procuring business, so anyway, those are my opinions on this. Thank you.
Does any, Mrs. Christensen?
I'll be brief. I, I just, I concur with Mrs. Case on especially two points. The 3 million is, is too high, and not using the same vendors over and over again. One that comes to mind is just Progressive Roofing, just seems like they have a monopoly on all our roofing repairs, but I'm sure there's others, so I'm hoping that the, the future board will have an agenda item to take a look at these types of things, but I do concur with a lot of what you're saying, Mrs. Case.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Before we adjourn, I would like to remind you that the next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, December 12th at 6:30. Before that, will obviously be Thanksgiving, so once again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I'm going to embarrass her, but before that will also be Mrs. Case's birthday, so I won't make everybody sing, but come up and wish Mrs. Case a happy birthday because that's also on Thanksgiving Day.
But following my birthday is your birthday.
True, but I've got the mic right now. So anybody else have anything else I want to jump in on seeing none? Mrs. Case may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.